Okay, ready to go?
Yep.
Okay, we'll start with special considerations. Virtually, please mute yourself if you're not speaking. And use the raise hand feature in a participants panel to indicate you would like to speak on an agenda item. Remember to unclick or lower your hand afterwards. Please limit extraneous use of the chat feature as it can distract board members and the audience and members from the conversation taking place about items in the meeting. Rules of participation. Anyone wishing to speak, please raise your hand. After recognition, address your comments to the chair. Comments must relate to the pending agenda item. By board rules, audience and board members can have up to two turns to speak on a topic. Those speaking should be concise and limit comments to one minute per turn. Those giving reports should limit their response, excuse me, limit their reports to three minutes or five minutes for presentations. Please silence all electrical devices. Notes: This board may take action on any agenda item. As required by the State Sunshine Law, Chapter 92, HRS, specific issues not listed on this agenda cannot be voted on unless properly added to the agenda by a two-thirds vote. First, we go on with oath of office. Okay. Anyone that has not received their oath of office as yet, I think we all just did, except... We got everybody, huh?
Except those that are not attending right now, Lindsay, Louis, and Michelle.
Okay, now it's your turn to call to order.
Yeah, I'll start the roll call. Let me start with the peoples here. Dave? Judy?
Yes, here, present.
Paul Robady?
Here, here.
Wookiee Kim?
Present.
Present.
Morgan Lee?
Morgan Lee?
Present.
Angie Solomon?
Here.
Mohammed Quadri? Mohammed was here. Mohammed? Okay, we'll get back to him. Michelle Katchuk? Is Michelle here? Michelle Katchuk? Louis Caldera? Is Louis here? Louis Caldera? Negative. Lindsay Alred. Is Lindsay here? I do not see her. And then let's get back to Mohammed. Mohammed, you here, right? They had like verbal visual confirmation.
Yes, I am here, Mohammed Anmar Quadi.
Perfect. So we have seven. We have four of them.
Okay, perfect. Okay, next we do the election of officers. Neighborhood plan, officers be elected by the chair, one or more vice chairs, the secretary treasurer, any other officer the board determines it needs to conduct business. So I'm not quite sure who do we start with?
We'll start with chair.
I'd like to do it. I would like to do it. I'm gonna need a lot of support to do it, but I think we could do pretty well. You know, that's where it's at. Anybody else would like to do chair? Thanks, guys.
No.
Thank you.
Did you want to nominate yourself chair?
Do you need a motion?
We need, we need... Okay, there's the nomination. You can nominate yourselves.
Oh God, this is horrible.
Oh, nominate you.
Yeah, I nominate. I nominate myself. Paul Robady is chair. All those second? God, you guys...
Okay, so I'll do a roll call. When I call your name, say the person's name that you want to be voted in as chair. So just the position of chair. Dave Barber?
Name of the person, Paul Robady?
Oh God.
Judy Douglas? Judy?
Yes.
Just said a name for the person you want as chair.
Yeah, good, I don't know that long.
And it's Paul.
Paul Robady?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wookiee Kim?
Yes.
Yes.
Robady.
Morgan Lee?
Morgan Lee?
Paul Robady. Paul Robady.
Angie Solomon?
Paul Robady as well.
Mohammed Quadri?
Quadri?
Paul Robady.
Paul Robady? And let me see, Lindsay, in case you guys came.
Paul.
Louis Caldera? Michelle Katchuk? Well, you have been voted to. Congratulations, you're a chair.
Thank you.
Okay. Now you're all in trouble. Okay, next we... We're going to go for vice chair. Okay, all those that would like to be vice chair. Morgan. Wookiee. Dave. I would like to hear one of you guys. Judy?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like that. I'd like you guys to go for the chair. Vice chair.
Oh boy.
Anybody wants to do that? Come on.
I will nominate myself.
Who is that now?
Morgan. Morgan.
Morgan, huh? Okay. Anybody else?
Second, I second that nomination.
There you go. Now we're talking. Yeah. We have a second on that one. Do a roll.
I second.
Another roll call. Again, said a name of the person you want as vice chair. Barber?
Barber?
Yeah, Barber.
Paul Robady?
Paul Robady?
Morgan?
Morgan?
Judy Douglas?
Judy?
Judy?
Happy Solomon?
I'm sorry. Did you hear me?
My name is Morgan.
Say again?
Say again?
Angie Solomon, did you say?
Morgan.
Morgan.
Mohammed Quadri?
Morgan?
Morgan?
Morgan Lee?
Morgan Lee?
Morgan, Morgan?
I don't see the others. They didn't show up yet. So congratulations, you're vice chair.
Congratulations. Okay, next is for secretary. This is a good job. It helps us do our business. So, I know you want to smile. So, I don't want to fuck anybody, but... Wookiee, do you have anything? To... You're pretty busy at work.
Yeah, I'm a little reluctant to be an officer.
Okay.
Okay.
I thought that might be true. Angie Solomon?
This is my first time on a neighborhood board. And I kind of wanted to just...
Feel your way.
Just observe more and learn before I say... Okay.
Well, we got Dave Barber who could... No, he's... Barber, don't... Okay.
So this is for the treasurer or the secretary?
Pardon?
This is for treasurer or the secretary? Which position we are talking now?
Secretary.
Oh, no, I'm not interested. I'm interested in the treasurer.
Okay, we'll get to you next. But we need a secretary. And we might just, we could hold off until our next meeting. And hopefully we have more people show and we'll have it again. Is that... We can do that, yes?
That's correct.
Yeah, because it doesn't seem to be anybody wants to be the secretary. Unless somebody would like to do it. We'll count to three. One. Two. We'll take it up at the next meeting. Is that okay with you?
That's good.
Okeydoke. Next. How about treasurer? We know that...
How about treasurer? You know that...
Okay, anybody would like to be treasurer? Mohammed?
Pardon?
I will nominate Mohammed. I think he said he was interested.
Yes, I'm interested in the treasurer.
I second that.
I second that.
We got two and... We just need to say yes for everybody.
Are there other nominations?
I'm sorry, I didn't ask that.
Okay, we can move on to roll call. Again, we state the name of the officer you want as treasurer. Dave Barber? Dave?
Dave?
I didn't catch that.
I didn't catch that.
That Mohammed?
That Mohammed?
Got it.
Got it.
Judy?
Judy?
No, thank you.
It's Mohammed.
You second?
You second?
I second.
Oh, there we go.
Oh, there we go.
Mohammed as treasurer, Judy?
Yes.
Paul Robady?
Yes. Treasurer.
Wookiee Kim?
Mohammed.
Morgan Lee?
Morgan Lee?
Morgan Lee?
Morgan Lee?
Mohammed. Mohammed.
Angie Solomon?
Angie Solomon?
Mohammed.
And Mohammed Quadri? Self-right. See if anybody's here. Somebody else checked in. Congratulations, Mohammed treasurer.
Congratulations, Mohammed treasurer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we proceed, can you please figure out the echo situation?
Oh, so not me?
It's still pretty bad.
Yeah, it really is.
Yeah, it really is.
Yeah, Judy, unless you're speaking, I prefer you turn off your mic. Thank you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we did elect the chair. That's myself, Paul Robady. The vice chair, Morgan Lee. Secretary, we're gonna hold over till the next meeting. Treasurer, that was Mohammeded. And congratulations, you guys. It'll be fun working with you. And some of you guys, we're gonna count on a lot, so appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, next. Public Safety Liaison. We have the fire department. I didn't see... We have somebody from the fire department in? Station 29, McCully Moilyly. Does anybody hear from that? I didn't see those guys. Okay, they might be working, so... Okay, everything, hope everything's safe. Okay, next, the Honolulu Police Department. We have District 1 or District 7?
District 1?
Yes, sorry. Appreciate that. Good seeing you. Okay. Okay, next. Board organization. Meeting deter. One... Yeah, that's, we don't know where we're gonna... I don't know what to say about this one. We don't know where we're gonna have our meetings. It's funny, because I went to that one Filipino community meeting Saturday. Took my daughter, we went there, Morgan was there. There was only two of us from our neighborhood, but it was... You know, we struggle for Washington Intermediate, St. Mary's over there. Those guys have a clubhouse, man. It's beautiful there. So we need to find a spot for us to meet every month and keep it the same place. And I think Morgan and I have both thought that it would be great if we showed up at the meetings. And then again, I'm a little bit still disabled, but doing it from home is good also. But it'd be nice to see each other once a month to, you know, talk to somebody right in the face and just do that. So we'd like to think about that, find a place. That's what our guys are there for. So I'll let you know what's happening on that one. That one's near and dear to my heart, so... I think we need a good clubhouse, I like to call it, a meeting room. So we can invite neighborhood people. Like in my building, there are people that like to come. And then you go, "Where do you go?" And I said, "Up in my apartment." But we'll work on that. Okay? I'll keep you posted. Rules of participation, the drop? Okay, propose, adopt rules of participation.
So chair?
Yes.
You'd still need to vote for the time and the day.
Oh, they...
Even though you don't have a location yet, you still would need to discuss and vote for a day and time that you want to meet. You guys can continue to meet, continue meeting the same as you wish, but it still needs to be voted on.
Oh, I didn't know that. I thought it was that's we add. So, so the day is... So, okay, let's start with, are Thursdays okay? Do we ask for a... A... A vote for that?
Yeah, if you just want to keep it the same, the first Thursday at 6:30?
Is that okay with everyone? Anybody have any other days that would rather do it? I'm not free on Saturday and Sunday, so we might forget about those, but...
Neither are we.
Yeah, there you go. So Thursday night, first Thursday of the month at 6:30. Is that okay with everyone? Please, we'll do a roll call, yeah?
That's fine, that's fine with me, but if we wanted to move to seven, I would also be fine with that, too. I don't know if there's anyone that's rushing from anything to come, so...
Well, there you go. That's something to talk about. How many people want to have it later at 7 o'clock? Okay, it's up to you guys to...
I would prefer to reverse the matter, but I'm also okay with present.
So it seems like 6:30 is the time.
Wookiee said he would like to have it later.
I couldn't hear either one of you guys.
Wookiee, do you want to go again?
Yeah.
I just said I have a slight preference for 7 PM, but I can also put it at 6:30.
Okay, all those for 7 o'clock, say aye. Okay, could you give me a... Roll call on that one?
Is there a motion? Or did you want to just gauge?
I want to know.
What's that?
How about say 6:30 or 7? I don't know how to do that. Two... Hello?
Hello?
So did somebody want to make a motion?
We want, we can't make a motion until we finish it out. Which is 7 or 6:30? We would like to have a vote on who wants 6:30 or 7? Figure out the numbers.
I like 6:30.
Okay, so that's one for 6:30. Sorry about that. Okay. Could you do a roll call there?
Okay, let me do a roll call and see what time you get. Just...
There you go.
This is not an official vote. This is just a gauge if people would rather go 6:30 or 7 for the meeting.
Yes.
Dave Barber?
Six thirty.
I had Judy at six thirty, correct? Power Body.
Yes.
I had to say six thirty.
Wiki seven, correct? Morgan Lee.
Morgan Lee.
Yeah, seven's good.
Seven's good.
Uh Angie Solomon.
Evan.
Evan.
PM.
PM.
And Muhammad Quodri. Muhammad.
Muhammad.
Muhammad. Six thirty or seven for the next, for the next term, meeting start. I don't think Muhammad's here anymore.
He left.
The widlows' quorum, if he's not here anymore.
That doesn't make a difference. Okay, I guess we're gonna have to stay.
I think, I think he's here, just. Muhammad, you there? Muhammad. Yeah, he must've got disconnected. Currently is three-three, gauging it, it's currently three-three, and we'll have quorum, we need one more.
Well, uh what I suggest is, we think about it till the next meeting and vote on it next meeting. Because it doesn't seem like we're gonna get a quorum now. It's because you are not in our neighborhood anymore. Yes, so yeah, what do you think? Hang until next meeting?
Yeah, we can move on and make the rest of the in um meeting informational sense, we can't, until Muhammad comes back on.
Okay, cool. Okay, everybody's understand that, yeah, we haven't decided on that yet. Uh proposed that rules participation. Okay, rules of percip- participation, opposed to adopt rules of participation as stated on the agenda. But I I don't understand what that one means.
So rules of participation is the part on the top that you guys um discuss and vote on each each term.
There you go.
But without Muhammad, there's no quorum.
There you go, so, we're moving along. Okay. Proposal to establish a special affairs committee, other as necessary to conduct regular board business, for initial com- committee of business setting board initiatives and priorities. So that, it seems like they wanna send a, we wanna get a committee together to go to these these um initiatives that we we go through all year, it seems like we would do that each time something came up, and then we'd get together a committee to go do those things. Um like Red Hill and whatnot, so. Um again, we can't do anything cuz we don't have quorum.
Incorrect.
Yeah, so, I'm not gonna beat my head together, okay, go government administration liaison, Board of Water Supply. Do we have that guy here?
Yes, can you hear me?
There we go.
Hey there, hi there. So so for this month, for July, we had no, for the month of June, there was no main breaks to report. And for July, our uh general announcement is about smart irrigation month. We just wanna remind folks that July is one of the hottest times of the year, and that's when um water use typically increases, so things are hot and dry, so just remember water before nine in the morning or after five in the afternoon. Always inspect your irrigation system for leaks or misdirected or broken sprinkler heads. And think about installing a smart irrigation device like a weather-based irrigation controller, and you can get more information all about um smart irrigation month on our website at Board of Watersupply dot com slash irrigation, and that's our monthly announcement.
Now, what do you think about um all of us that live in apartments, is there anything we should do, or?
Oh, yeah, most definitely, yeah, so always go around and look around, apartment buildings are one of the worst when it comes to um uh broken sprinkler heads, I live in an apartment building, I see it all the time, if you see anything leaking, if you see overwatering, let your property manager know, if they're not doing anything, let us know so we can follow up and we can work with them in getting it fixed. Cuz remember, when you live in an apartment building and not paying a water bill, but operating costs go up, and that's never a good thing, so. Definitely, that's something I would do.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Nothing, Dave Barber? Nothing, okay, okay, thank you very much.
Oh, you're very welcome, have a good day, thanks.
Okay. Now, Mr. Michael O'Keefe, the mayor's representative.
Aloha, everyone, uh Mike O'Keefe, um mayor's rap, I'm also the deputy director at the city's Department of Environmental Services. So I have um several items to update you on tonight, and they're all related to questions that were raised uh two meetings ago, uh there's about nine items or so, I'll try to go through them um swiftly. Uh the first, the first item um was related to um concern raised about bumps on University Avenue. Um the comment was on the Makai, on the Makai-bound lane of Uni- University Avenue, tree roots are being, beginning to significantly warp uh the road, uh can work be done to fix this? And so our, our um Department of Facilities Maintenance that's responsible for fixing um these issues in the road, um they requested, actually requested more information um about a specific location along university where the roots are warping the road so that they can, they can go out and fix. Um they they mentioned that they'll, they'll work with the Department of, City's Department of Parks and Recs Arborist to address the tree roots um and and um and then provide a road path, so apologies, I can't remember who raised that concern two meetings ago, but um but if you have a more specific location, or maybe, maybe um anyone that knows of a specific location around uh university, I can, I can take that back to the Department of Facility Maintenance.
That was, that was Dave Barber, I believe.
Okay.
Dave, you have a place for him? All you have to do is drive up and down the street, you'll know where the bumps are.
Okay, I'll I'll pass that along.
About the nine hundred block, it's about in the nine hundred block, about.
Nine hundred block area, okay, I'll I'll make that note. Okay, um, let's see here, second item. Um there was a comment about wheelchair access um near at the intersection of Young and Victoria Street. It was reported that one of the sidewalks at the intersection of Young and Victoria is, is wheelchair accessible, but the other is not. Um forcing wheelchair-bound residents to roll down the street to the next available side uh driveway to access the sidewalk. Um the 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 question was, is this the case, if so, can work be done to make sidewalks accessible um at this intersection? Um wheelchair accessible at this intersection, City's Department of Design and Construction um responded to this one. Uh that they are going to add um this intersection to a future curb curb ramp at very, there there's a contract, it's called curb ramp at various locations. Um they're gonna add that to um this location to that contract for evaluation. Um and then um they'll budget money for this and then add a ramp. Um uh the, they also noted that there's a, there's a website um where um the public can request um curb ramps at um at intersections such as the one uh Young and Victoria Street, um and I'll just mention it real quick, it's WWW eight dot honolulu dot gov forward slash DDC. Um so you can um submit the uh the location information and make a request at that website. Uh third, third item, um Calumini Park. Uh a light was requested at the far end of Calumini Park in order to discourage individuals from loitering in the park after hours, um is this feasible or advisable? If so, can we install lights in the requested portion of the park? So the City's Department of Parks and Rec responded to this, uh noting uh the installation of new of a new lighting system at Calumini Park would be a capital improvement project. Uh the administration manages its capital improvement budget based on funding priority and backlog of existing improvements and staffing needed to execute and manage these projects. When projects are added to our capital improvements list, uh they are considered in context uh in the context of other newly proposed and existing projects that need to be completed. Um but this project is going to be um, is going to be added to the list, and so it'll be evaluated for funding. Um the public is also advised, and I think everyone probably knows this, but um they also added that the public's also advised to contact HPD if they should witness any illegal activities or loitering in the park during uh park closure hours. So there was a kind of a general comment made a couple of meetings ago, on to the next item number four. Asking about uh uh the Department of Facility Maintenance's work to repair uh sidewalks and roads, um the 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 um um board member, a member of the public wanted to know the best means to track sidewalk improvement projects in their districts. For example, is there digital means to track projects and be more aware of of when and where they will occur? Uh uh the City's Department of Facility Maintenance responds to this, um they said that um improvement projects may be incorporated into other department projects. But um they have links available on their website um that I will drop into the chat um that discusses its Awahu pedestrian plan and that identifies walkway projects. And um um and provides maps to those projects, and so I'll just drop, drop that in the chat right now. Uh next item, number five. Um vandalism of McCully Bridge, a resident reported that there's a large hole inside of the McCully Bridge on the Makai side just before um you would begin walking along the bridge. Can the department verify this, and if so, um can the work uh can work be done to repair it? Um that the City's Department of Facility Maintenance also responded to this one, um noting that there was a hole and that they're gonna work with um the City's Department of Design and Construction to repair it. Um they didn't give a timeline for on that, but I'll I'll follow up on a timeline for the next meeting. Uh number six, um um Cap- Capulani Boulevard Bridge, how, over the Houston ditch. Is there a, is there a timeline for repairs to the Capulani Bridge uh fence over the ditch, um it was mentioned that it was damaged about a year ago. Um City's Department of Facility Maintenance also took this one, the bridge fence repairs along Capulani Boulevard over the Houston ditch will be included as part of a DDC Department of Design and Construction project for that area, so another, another project added to um Design and Construction's list. Um three more to go, number seven, um there's a question about uh using the Alawak Golf Course um to stage um equipment, materials, construction, um uh vehicles and such for the Alapono Bridge project. Um is it gonna be you, is the LY golf course can be used for that? Um it is not going to be used as a staging area for the bridge project, the golf course will not, will not have space available to accommodate as they need as they will need staging areas for their upcoming um roofing and other capital improvement projects for the golf course. Sorry, was there a question?
Are they still building Topgolf there?
Uh I don't, I I don't know specifically, I've heard that that project is kind of dormant right now. Um but if that's, I I can follow up uh for next.
Yeah, would you find that one out? Thank you.
Sure thing. Um let's see, second to last item, um there's a question um about a bike lane um installation along Capulani Boulevard, uh and it was actually related to a a a question I'd answered from three meetings ago. Uh the City's Department of Design and Construction said that Capul- Capulani Boulevard from Atkinson to South King Street will be reconstructed and resurfaced in both directions by a project. The name of the project is Rehabilitation of Streets, Unit Eighty-Nine A. The project is scheduled to start um soon, um it may have started already, actually, since June, July of twenty-three. And the um, and the contract time is uh three hundred and sixty calendar days. There was a question wondering if a bike lane is going to be added as part of this project. Uh and it, the DDC, Department of Design and Construction, who's managing this project um said a bike lane is not included in this project. Uh lastly, um this question has been coming up past a couple of board meetings about abandoned vehicles, just another follow-up item. Uh the City's Customer Service Department said its inspectors, this is actually the question, the City's Customer Services Department said its inspectors have ten to twelve days to close out a complaint about an abandoned vehicle. Um is it possible to resolve these issues sooner? Uh City's Department of Customer Services responded, in most cases, the complaint is closed out earlier. Once the inspector receives a complaint, the inspector will locate and mark the vehicle. If the vehicle does not move within twenty-four hours, the inspector will tag the vehicle for towing. Thereafter, the tow contractor, the city's tow contractor has seventy-two hours to tow the vehicle. If the vehicle cannot be located, the complaint is closed the following day. If the uh vehicle moves within the twenty-four hour period, the complaint is closed within three to five days. And that reclu- uh concludes my report for tonight, um but I'm happy to take any, any questions.
I I'd like to make some, um have some comments. Um one, I I do keep asking uh for you to go to the DOT and find out about why we cannot have raised crosswalks at Kohiyo School on uh Wayaka and uh raised crosswalk on Hivive at uh for the Alawak School. Both of those, if if they bother to put in the bumps along Capilani, they can certainly do it for the safety of children and their parents taking them to school, those are two really important things. Second of all, um I hope you will ask uh the appropriate um department to find out about the three conflicting projects that somehow have happened in our neighborhood. The Notpono Bridge and the um Kuile Place and the uh Complete Streets. And they need to have, uh there's three conflicting ones there, and they need to have a ad hoc or an important budget committee. And that would be, of course, having Calvin Say, our, our council member, uh a participant in it at Tucson, since he put forth monies for planning, but I think uh the real reality is that these are gonna be serious drains on the City and County uh budget, that means our taxpayers will be all impacted by it. And um so I would expect to have some kind of a budget committee that's set up so we can see that they have actually planned for the resolution of those three conflicting projects, and I also. I could finish, one minute, I could finish, okay, and and um that there be a budget that is set up for in 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 Infinity to take care of the security and police and all the other cons- and maintenance concerns for the Notpono Bridge, and that would include also our council members sitting in on that committee because he addressed to put money for the planning, but not for anything else, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, I just had a quick follow-up, the um about the raised crosswalks. You I, you mentioned two locations, I think I caught the second one near Alawak School, what was the first one?
First one, uh Kohiyo School, it's at, it's actually at where the two streets come together, uh Kuile and um Wayaka. But you're, probably it's Wayaka that you want to address, whichever one it is, the two streets come together and meet. And that's, lots of parents take their kids to school that way, as well as kids coming by themselves. And people, I hate to say it, people run that. And people, I hate to say it, people run that stop sign all the time. It's very, very dangerous. Thank you. Both places are very, very dangerous. Running the stop signs all the time.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Michael. Anybody else have anything for the, for the mayor's rep?
Yes.
Who's that?
Me, John. I've got my hand raised. I've had it raised for a while.
John. John who?
Johnson.
Okay.
Yes, my question had to do with the Kalo Mini Park issue, the CIP. I, I believe that I was somewhat behind that request for lighting, but I think that it's in honesty, lighting is not what we want in this area because lighting is going to basically make it harder for our kids to sleep. I'm in a three story apartment and those lights are not very far from where, you know, our windows are, and that may be a problem. What we want and what my landlord, who was here at the last meeting, want and have been asking for, for years is for somebody to do something about the issue. Right now, as I speak, there are three people in a tent, two floors down, right under my window. They play music during the day. I called twice last night. The police didn't handle it. I woke up this morning early. They were still there. There was another person out there with a stolen cart. And they've been lying there all day long. The police basically say they can't do anything. Oh, it's, we can't say that it's a stolen cart because nobody's turned it in or called it in. So we have an ongoing problem. We have people in the stairwells, under the stairwells of our building that the police do not take care of. When it's called in, we've got a lot of drugs in this area now. It's getting worse and worse. We want people, we want this park back for our community so we can use it. And unfortunately, nobody's clearing out the homeless. We've got homeless in the back of the park. I'm sorry, I think the word is houseless. We have houseless people in the back of the park. We have them directly under my window. We have them all around. We have domestic fights going on during the day. My kids, three days ago, listened to 15 minutes of F bombs going off because some lady was yelling at her significant other out there. And this is not acceptable. I don't care about the lights so much. I don't think they're going to care about the lights. You know, they, it hasn't done anything. We need a police presence in here that can clear people out at night and keep the noise to a minimum so that we can sleep, so our children can sleep. In my building alone, there's about a dozen children. And I've mentioned this before and nothing gets done. There was more concern that there were houseless people back there and, oh my God, what about their rights? But the people that live here and have lived here for 30 years, we don't seem to have rights here. We'd like some rights here. We would like it if, you know, something was done. And that's pretty much it. I really don't want to see the lights personally because I think lights is just going to, you know, exacerbate the problem. What we would like to see is earlier closure hours instead of 10:00 PM, we'd like to see 7:00 PM. And that would give us more relief than anything else. So if we could get that, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Sorry to keep you waiting.
Thank you. I got all of that. Thanks.
You got that, Michael? It seems that that's a huge problem. Let's see if we can take care of that next month.
Understood. Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else? Going once, twice?
Daisy wants to say something. Quickly, very quickly, if I can just say, it's Alanaio is the name. It's no longer Houston Ditch. It's Alanaio.
I got it. Thank you. Okay. Apologies. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Chair Rabati, and congratulations. I missed it. Okay, the question is regarding the staging area for the Ala Wai golf course being used. Can you double check with Anton Crocky? Because he reports to Neighborhood Board Number Five. He mentioned that the staging area on Kapahula Avenue by the library is to be used for the Ala Pono Bridge. So there's some conflicting information. And I understand that the city might be doing some bridge repair work on the golf course itself. So can that be clarified? Because it's a big concern to the community and, you know, and understand according to what you now sunrise, the construction of the Ala Pono Bridge is to start next year. So some place has to have area to stage their equipment. So I don't think they're going to find one in two months. So it's a very concerning. So please double check that. And I'm not sure who is in charge of staging everything, but that needs to be clarified. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. And just, just to clarify what I did mention too, is like they, they are, there is going to be staging at the golf course for there's a roofing, I guess, re-roofing the clubhouse, and then there's a bridge project, not the Ala Pono Bridge. Projects that they're going to use staging for. They did report it was not going to be used for Ala Pono project, but I'll double check.
Could I just say one more thing? It is not, it does not pono to use the name Ala Pono at all. If you talk to the whole Hawaiian community, if you talk to all the rest of us, they're all locals. We would not like to have that name used. It's a disrespect of the, the term pono. Please modify the name to something else. That is not appropriate. Thank you.
Okay, we'll work on that. Okay, last call. For the mayor's rep.
Janelle has her hand up.
I don't see it, so.
This is, this is Janelle from Councilmember Seay's office. Just because it was brought up the Kalo Mini Park. I put in the chat our resolution that we had introduced for the park closures. But we were told from DPR that we needed community support. So if you guys do pass the resolution, we'll definitely push to move that one forward.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That'll sure help those folks. Okie dokie. All right, Michael, thank you very much again. Next, we have Elmer. Welcome back, Mr. Elmer.
Thank you. Aloha, everyone. I'm at University of Hawaii, Manoa. I submitted my report into the chat. But let me kind of give you a summary of it. There's been, I guess, two reports that I missed because of the meetings and so on. Atherton House, which is the old YMCA, YWC up on university, is, will be open starting in August. We are starting to accept students. This, this is the, a project that is, we are affiliated with it's a, it's a private organization in which they are providing dorm space for all of our UH students, not only Manoa, but everyone on our, on Oahu. So Kapiola Community College, anyone that actually needs housing. It is also a joint venture with Rise, which is an entrepreneur program at University of Hawaii Shider Business School. St. Francis School, University of Hawaii did make an effort to purchase it, but it was a private entity is now in escrow for that particular parcel. We are now returning to looking at developing a new parking structure on campus so that we can alleviate the traffic in the lower campus for only students and bring all of our staff to park on campus in this structure. As you probably remember, we are trying to get our campus very green, so there'll be, there'll be a limit, limiting a lot of the driving area on campus. It will be more of a walking campus and upper, upper part. Football, as you know, our season is coming across. Our first game is actually on a Friday night. It's September 1st. That's against Stanford. We are in the works of actually looking at either having a lot of our staff work remotely, having some more courses held at other campuses, go on, have our courses either online and so on, to alleviate traffic and so on. Just to let you know, we did secure parking off, off campus so that there will be more parking where we can shuttle people into to the stadium. Just to let you know, and Chair Rabati, next month, I will invite head coach Timmy Chang, Robin Amos, Robin Amos for volleyball and its director, Angelo's, to take my spot at my presentation next month.
Great.
Yeah, so that you guys get to meet them. And, and I wanted to kind of reach out for that. But outside of that, I'm open for any questions you guys may have.
Board members, anybody have a question? No? Okay, you're up.
Okay, Laura. Yes, yes. Hi, Elmer. You said that everybody would have dorm space with the completion of the Atherton, everything, that there'd be 100% ability to have the dorm space. Why then with this framework committee that put up whatever they think is the new vision for the UH campus? Why would they want to be cutting the enrollment from 20,000, 27,000 down to 20,000? And then they claim that they're going to move the College of Ed off of the property over on the EVA side and put in more dormitory and housing and retail. This is a complete desecration of the whole history of the UH campus. The coming, that, that's why Founder's Gate is there. It's the, it's the Tropical Ag and the College of Ed coming together in the early part of the 20th century. And it was with the grand, you know, park-like setting with grass and everything. I would like to think that that is seriously rethought because if you have enough dormitory spaces and there's a lot of people in Moili that are ratcheting up these big buildings supposedly for dormitory space. I do not think that the alteration of losing green space and losing the sense of openness and the beneficial garden spot on campus is worth it. Thank you. Please ask. Yeah.
I will. Thank you very much. Just to make sure you're very clear, we are not, there's no proposal yet right now regarding moving the college. It is part of our plan. It will be part of our plan. That whole area is not even in discussion of redevelopment. We're still working with the University Lab School, so that is not, that's not even in the works. And if we do, we'll have to go out and kind of meet everyone. Regarding the green space, I agree with you. I will go back and, and talk to them. Thank you.
Any other questions for Elmer? Going once, twice? Thank you very much for coming.
Aloha.
Aloha. Okie dokie. Next, Governor Matthew. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I don't, I don't think I had any items to follow up from the last couple of meetings. But I did want to mention the governor wants everybody to be aware that we are in the middle of hurricane season. And being a doctor, the governor is particularly concerned with people who have needed medications to have at least a two week supply of those medications in case there is a hurricane. But that's all I have. I would be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Okay, anybody in the board have any questions for the governor? Going once? Twice? Nobody? Okay, Laura, you're in there again.
Very, very quickly, I commend the governor for starting the new initiative for real affordable rentals and housing and the Kalahalas that he is proposing. Has there been one that's been proposed yet and definite for Palolo Valley? It would be very important to have one there because we have certainly had our share in Moili of various not affordable housing initiatives and like to see it there spread out in all the communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Going once?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay. Who is this?
Hi, I'm hello, I'm, I'm Ms. Ishii. I wanted to say that I would please like to send a message to Governor Green about vetoing. Please do not veto HB 153 and HB 1088 because they are really important for our water, for our future, our future water security. I put it in the chat why I think HB 153 and HB 1088 are very important. And please do not veto those bills. Thank you.
Thank you. I will relay that.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next. Now, let's, we have a guest here, Councilmember Calvin Seay.
Yep. Congratulations to all the board members that have been reelected and elected for the first time. I'm very happy that you folks are getting involved in public service. But more importantly, this evening, I do like to say that first and foremost, my report is in the chat, is number one. For the question in regards to the top golf project, there is no project being planned at this point in time.
Okay.
Okay. Then we go on to the program that we'll be having next week on July 10th, Monday, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. These are for our residents who need help in regards to rent and utility help. Moving on, I would like to have the board, Neighborhood Board, adopt a resolution supporting our city and county Honu Project and Core Project once more. For those of you who do live around Stadium Park, we had the Honu Program there for about eight months in addressing the homeless population. Number two, Core is a new program for the members who have been on the board know about, and this particular is an outreach program in trying to do a comprehensive evaluation of that homeless person. So that that person can get housing and then overall medical attention. So those are the two. Paul, if you folks could adopt a resolution in strong support whereby the administration could look into that and then maybe have these programs in the district that you folks all do represent. And it may not have to be just Stadium Park. It could be the Ala Wai Park, where I've had a lot of calls now in regards to the Ala Wai Promenade, where the homeless are at and other areas in the District Five that I have to represent. Next, we talked about the Kalo. Mr. Johnson and I think Janelle stated for the record, last month, the board voted down the park closure resolution. We need that if we are going to do something in regards to the mini park at the lower campus of the University of Hawaii. And that's a part of it. And then I'll go on to other issues that were brought up and that dealt with the Bolo Dome area in regards to once more the homeless. And the developer has gotten the homeless to be evicted, but where they went, I really don't know. And maybe that's why today's email that we got, it said, can we do something about the homeless at Makahiki Way? By the comfort station of the park. Other areas of the homeless was in Kalakaua Avenue, South King Street. Vandalism in regards to graffiti at the Frank C. Judd Mini Park. A group of residents talked about or emailed us in regards to the possibility of a special design district to address private road improvements. That's been a big issue similar to what has happened last night in the Manoa Neighborhood Board in regards to a parcel of road that is now in limbo between the private landowner and the city and the university and the border water supply, et cetera. Who, who all have some use of that particular road. Then we moved it, moved on to the noise problem that we have once more, trash, fireworks, mufflers, sirens. And we have tried to address it with the state. Moving on next. A rental house, two star, noise nuisance passed 10:00 PM. Housing code violations for occupants, that was also addressed. So moving on, uh, we also went down to the Alawai Plaza condominium in having a staff Melvia talk about fire safety once more. And the city is looking into that along with the state of Hawaii government. At this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you folks may have.
Um, I just asked first, any board members have anything to say or ask the councilman to answer? We'll start there. I just have one thing, you were talking about homeless going here, there, whatever. I just happen to be, um, I go to therapy there on uh, on Ward Avenue, down on Ward Avenue, but I just passed, was it Thomas Square?
Okay, yeah, yes.
I, I will tell you that we did a magnificent job of cleaning that park, setting the trees up nice. Now it's a homeless center. It's uh, it's, it's pretty amazing how it's uh, housekeeping comes in and cleans it and then we move right back in there. And again, it's, I don't, I think it's more of our fault collectively that we haven't come up with an idea what we should do with this. But it sure is not what we're doing now because all it is is we're cleaning it and we're moving people back like you said, Kalakaua Avenue, uh, King Street. I mean, it's just, it, the same people move from the Bologdrome, they move over here, they move over there, but, but it's um, we haven't come up with an answer and I know that it frustrates all of us.
Yes.
And, and I can't say they're wrong. All I can say is that it, well, no, I shouldn't say it, but we'll go, so.
Paul, Paul, I truly believe that everyone who's at this meeting tonight are very compassionate people. It's just a question that we all have to work together as a com- community purpose and goal. And for me, it has been very difficult because two and a half years ago, when I became a city council member, I didn't realize I inherited over fifteen different homeless encampments. All of the parks that we have, the city parks from Green Park that I said to you folks to Manoa Park, to Stadium Park, to Cartwright Park, to Makiki Park, to Inha Park, which is right next to the Department of Agriculture building. It's endless. I recall going to the Alamonakakoko Neighborhood Board, Kakako Park, they had a homeless encampment. What I'm getting at, it is a community problem whereby we all have to come together to address this issue. If it's going to be a medical issue, where can we get the state to help us out this county? More social workers? More psychiatrists? More drug therapy? I, I really don't know, but I agree with all of you as a concern and for Mr. Johnson, who lives at the mini park. So I just wanted to share with all of you what has been going on. And for the new members of the board, yes, the board, the last board did voted down as far as having the park closure measure at the mini park, Kalo Mini Park. So I can appreciate your thoughts, your concerns, but uh, after two and a half years, I don't know what I can do, but maybe the question could be posed to our own state legislature also. I'm just one person representing five house districts also.
I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Okay, anybody else on our board? Any questions for the councilman? Any questions you have? Uh, anybody?
This is Chanel from Councilmember C's office. I did want to also just bring your attention to the chat because the two in each resolution for the um, affordable housing next to the Bolog- or in the Bologdrome area did come uh, get introduced, so it'll be heard in the zoning committee later this month.
And for the new members of the board, this particular state law gives Calvin Say and the nine other, eight other council members just forty-five days to enact on it. A no action is an approval. Understand that. And that's why this past year, during the legislative session, we did make a request. Instead of the forty-five days, why can't you make it sixty or seventy-five days so that I could have more public hearings? For the general public that will be affected by this project. But this project has gone before the Molili Makali Neighborhood Board many a times also. It's just that for the new members, if you're not aware of all these projects, and I think Paul, maybe the staff and I can work with you and anyone else in regards to the issues of the Moiliili Neighborhood Board District and Makali District.
Anytime. And I'd appreciate it. Okay, anybody?
Paul, can I go?
Matter of fact, yes, we can, Morgan.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Councilmember Say, I just wanted to ask why the um, solution of closing the park is seen as the next step? I know we had a discussion about this at the last meeting and that I wasn't there, so I'm sorry if I'm making you regurgitate a lot, though there are some new people here. Um, but yeah, I guess, first from my selfish perspective, I don't like parks getting closed early. I live close to parks that I wish were open later. Um, and it seems like it's an odd, and you know, one, if you can imagine a situation in which the um, situation with people who are homeless resolves itself in the coming years, people would be pretty unhappy to find out their park closed at seven PM. So yeah, I'm just curious why that seems.
Morgan, I think because the way our society is very legal, HPD must have a sign erected to say that this park is closed at seven to enforce the law to allow them to move out of the park. Without that sign, there is no enforcement. It's just like the no trash.
Even things like, I mean, there's not like necessarily like a violation of like open container laws or people being on sidewalks.
There, there are ordinances like that. And uh, you, if you do get a exemption from, from the mayor or the governor, it could be done. But another big issue that this board faced was when we had that issue with Skycap at uh, Kalakaua and Philip Street, where the family erected tents on the sidewalk, which made it very difficult for the seniors to walk around and go on the road to get by them. And these are the topics and issues that day in and day out that the law enforcement are trying to address. And I can see the concern of the reg- regular citizens who have to walk around that encampment that was at that intersection of Phillips and Kalakaua where that particular young man was shot. All I'm getting at is that there's, if there's an inconvenience, isn't it my responsibility, your responsibility to see how we can comply with the present laws that we have on the books and that's all. Does it make sense, Morgan?
Sure. I guess in my mind, there's other things that are people are doing that I imagine there being citations for as opposed to just being in a park.
And Morgan, one final thought, and I have to say this very honestly to all of you. Whatever we enforce by the Honolulu Police Department, the fines and the violations, the resources that does not go to the state, that does not go to the county, it stays with the state of Hawaii. And that's why I'm saying to myself and his staff, I'm just disappointed that you're mandating more and more responsibilities to HPD in enforcing the law. And with these violations and tickets that you have, it goes to the state. Where's the balance? You want us to do the enforcement, we'll do it, which is the law that you folks had adopted, meaning the state legislature. A case in point, I've had two automobile repair shops that come up to me and tell me, you know, Mr. Say, why isn't HPD enforcing the si- safety check tick stickers? You can see, most of them are all outdated, meaning it is expired. Why are we not a- addressing the tinted li- the tinted windows? Which was supposed to be lighter than what it is today whereby police officers and you and I as citizens cannot see who is in, in that car driving an automobile. These laws are already on the books and we're not enforcing it. Which then tells me that the general public who does not believe in the enforcement of our laws are going to continue to do it. That's the concern I see for the future generations to address. I'm sorry, I'm getting on my soapbox, but uh, I just had to share that with all of you.
Okay, anybody else? Morgan, you finished there? Morgan?
How?
You're done? Okay, so anybody else?
Not on the board or on the board?
Still on the board.
Hi there. I just wanted to mention something real quick. Sorry. Um, uh, I appreciate the fact that we had the conversation about Kalo Park. Um, it brought awareness to it. Um, again, like he said, um, I don't think having a uh, night closure is gonna affect the park because just last night, there's like four or five people that literally camped overnight. So whether we enforce the park at eight o'clock or six o'clock or ten o'clock, that's not the, that's not the solution. And again, we really don't know what the solution is, but I'm glad that it brought awareness because um, there's people coming out and actually doing cleanups and there's people getting involved with the park and it's being activated, but at the end of the day, um, there's still drugs being done because it's an area and the gentleman who owns that property right there came out and spoke, but there's an area right there where they sit all day long and they just do drugs right by the entrance of Kalo Park right at that way. And then when the police officers come, one of the excuses was they didn't, they resisted um, rehab um, opportunities in Makaha. Was one of the reasons why they didn't get arrested. Nobody gets arrested and nobody gets cited. So you know, with that in mind, again, I appreciate the, the fact that we had, we had the conversation and we bought awareness. And then um, the second thing real quick, council member is that, you know, the two, um, the, the resolution that you had talked about, is that going to be a resolution that we provide to you that you take upon yourself to create on behalf of the city council? Or is this just, just something on a grassroots level?
No, it, it has to come from you folks, the board. So we had already drafted one and seeing that there is be a, a sign for a park closure. Since, since the board did not adopt a resolution, I could not introduce a resolution that we had drafted ourselves in anticipation of the resolution that you folks had, if had adopted, would have gone to us and then I would probably introduce a resolution and that's all.
Well, not for the Kalo, but you're talking about the Honu, right?
Oh, Honu, yeah, Honu and Core.
So if we, if we create the resolution, will we present it to your office and then you guys going to present it to the city council on that platform or what is the deal?
Yes, we'll take that and, you know, draft it to the city council, to the mayor's office, asking that can you provide more programs of Honu and Core in the District Five area?
Mahalo, mahalo for all your work. Thank you so much, remember.
All of you that do, do the work for us.
Okay. Okay, now we're opening up to outside. Anybody have any questions from our guests?
Yes.
And who's that?
John, Johnson, again.
Go ahead, John.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to say something, I, I'm hearing the voice echo back. I don't know if somebody's got their, their thing on.
I don't know who that is.
Okay, uh, anyways, uh, I, because I think Louis and um, uh, some others may not uh, understand Morgan, uh, may not understand about this park. Uh, Louis, it sounds uh, is very knowledgeable about it because uh, he knew about the four people, three of whom are right now twenty feet under my window. And I have called them last night. I called the police at nine forty-five. I called them again at eleven. Uh, nothing got done. I woke up at six AM, they're still there. Uh, they've been there all day. They've gone and come back, done drugs. They're still right down there. Uh, somebody else showed up with a stolen uh, cart and they're down there now. They're all still there. I'll call as soon as ten o'clock comes around, but I can't call until ten. And then if they come, they come. If they don't, they don't. But you know, I called twice last night and I got no relief from it. Uh, the thing that matters to us is, yes, we do have people like Louis pointed out, we have them down there, but my kids have to go to bed early on to get ready for school. And if we can't wait, if we have to wait until ten PM to call the police and we have to sit and listen to domestic disputes down below or smell the pakalulu coming up or, you know, listen to people yelling and playing loud music until ten PM, my kids don't get to sleep. So yes, seven PM is important. And I really, really want to just take a moment out here to say thank you so much to Councilman Say and Melvia and Janelle and everybody else who has worked on it from the legislative side. Um, last month, we tried to pass the resolution here. We only had one or two dissents, I think. Uh, but we couldn't pass it because there were, there was a lot of, uh, we barely had a quorum. So uh, it didn't pass just because we had a few dissenters here and because the people that are in accentia do not count towards it, we didn't get it passed. So I would like to see this come back again because it does matter. And Bob Tanaka, who I believe Louis had mentioned, uh, he's my landlord, has been for twenty-ish years uh, in this location. And uh, you know, we, we both agree that it's a huge problem. We need enforcement. We need something enforced. And yes, that's putting a lot on to the police, but one of the unique situations here is that Kalo Mini Park is its own little world. It's cut off from everything. It's, it's in between a bunch of structures. One side is the, the freeway. Uh, we've got the Humane Society on one side. We've got the little business park on the other side and then my building on the other one. And it's really out of the way and a lot of bad elements will come in here at night. Right now, they're down below my window and I've got to wait until ten and they can disturb my children and the dozen or so children that live here until ten o'clock. I would like to be able to call it in at seven o'clock so I can have people come out. And I think Morgan had raised the issue that, you know, it's sad to see places closed, so you can't go there and I, trust me, nobody comes in here after dark. Nobody's coming in here after dark to enjoy it. If you come in here, even during the day, you go towards the back, you've got people, they're strewn out. They've got garbage all over the place. Sometimes they're on the uh, the things obstructing. There's water sources, so a lot of homeless come in to use those water sources. Uh, it, it's, it's a major problem. And there's, there's not that many people coming in to use these facilities because of this issue. So nobody's coming in here at seven uh, PM at night. I mean, nobody's coming in. Nobody with any good intentions is coming in at that hour. Nobody's enjoying this park after that. Not even the Humane Society who's supposed to have some responsibility here is coming in at that hour. So I just want to put it out there. Uh, the more we allow this to happen, the less and less it will be used by people that have good intentions and people that have dogs that want to use the dog park. But anyway, I've said my piece. Sorry. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Kind of let that one go past me. Anybody else to talk to councilmen?
Yes, please. Um, I have a question. Yeah, um, a bunch of us called yesterday to um, ask if we could have a town hall to talk about Kui Le Place. And so I just wanted to follow up on that. Can we meet with you, please?
Mm-hmm. At this point in time, we've met with, uh, is it?
Developer.
Not the developer. Whoever said that is very uh, uncalled for. Uh, I've met uh, many a times on the Webex or Zoom with the individuals, which I really, really can understand their plight. But I think for all of us, we should be aware that the developer, who had a presentation last month, shared for the record, the effort that they're putting in in trying to address the tenants. Mr. Wong, you know, brought it up and I'll go and read the uh, minutes of last month. And, you know, I, I, I personally feel they're bending over backwards at this point in time because at this time, it is with the state law in regards to the landlord tenant code. That's all it is. It's between a renter and an owner. And what happened is that in January, when the city council adopted it, we adopted it on the premise that there was enough meetings. That's why it is so important for the board members to uh, to know some of the historical perspectives. I recall one of the meetings that they did present to was at the church. Was it on Veritania Street or King Street? Where the Molili Makali Neighborhood Board used to meet? And all I'm getting at is that the council has already adopted the resolution in the support of the project whereby sixty percent will be addressing that gap rule. I think the tenants would like to see that it be forty percent area median income. That's going to be awfully difficult because how would that particular developer make any money if it's all going to be forty percent area median income?
Yeah, but you know what, but I'm sorry, council members say, um, we don't want such a big building in our neighborhood. It's already, the sewers are overflowing when it rains. I don't know how we can handle such, you know, one thousand and five units, that's so much.
Okay.
And.
Yeah, and your point is well taken and it was.
I don't understand how you folks, how city council could approve this huge building and it's forty-three stories high. Our neighborhood cannot handle this.
Well, it's already done and I apologize and I take full responsibility of my actions, I'm sorry.
Can you folks, um, cancel the exemptions that you gave them?
At this point in time, my answer to you would be no. And the reason why, you can get a lawsuit by the developer. Okay, that's all I can say at this point in time, I'm not an attorney also.
Well, can we get an attorney?
I, I.
I feel like our neighborhood needs some kind of legal representation on this.
Well, there, there are other, you know, nonprofit groups that could represent the tenants.
The tenants and the whole, the whole community because this is affecting everybody, whether you live there or whether you're a neighbor. You're going to be dealing with the traffic, we're going to be dealing with flooding, all kinds of stuff.
Okay, we're gonna have to.
This is a urban problem for our neighborhood. Infrastructure problem.
Okay, we're gonna have to move this along now.
Okay, thank you.
Well, can I? Well.
May I be next?
Is that?
Jack James.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, good evening, Speaker, how are you? Thank you, Chair.
Fine, nice to see you again.
Good to see you, sir. Uh, this past Saturday, your salary was increased by forty-three thousand dollars. I want to ask you a quick question, preceding that, uh, Chair Waters would not allow the public to speak on the salary increases and would not allow the increase to be on the, uh, agenda of a council meeting. Uh, sir, could I ask you if you supported what council, what Chair Waters did in those two instances? Not allowing the public to speak and not allowing the issue of the pay raises to be on an agenda? Did you support the chairman in those two issues?
Yes, I did support the chairman in his decision in regards to those two. There was, there was no measures before us.
And he would not, but you understand there was other council members that wanted to put it on, had a memorandum. You did not sign Councilman, uh, Talba's memorandum to have it put on the agenda, am I correct about that?
Yes. And I take full responsibility for my actions.
Uh, Speaker, thank you so much for addressing that.
Okay, next. Who is next?
I can be next.
Okay, Laura?
Okay, okay, uh, council members say, as our council member and also as the Budget Committee Chair, I would like to see that you have a plan in place for next meeting that would address the unending budgetary concerns that will go forward with having that, uh, bridge over the canal. You've made two dollops of, um, city and county money that is our state taxpayer dollars. This is going to the perennial, um, uh, maintenance, uh, security, police force, uh, the parking permits. Everything will have to be in place before anything is done with that and that is our taxpayer dollars. And it's going to be a huge unending into the future, into the, whatever the next century is. There's going to be a, a big, big problem with having to secure it. And the latest I was thinking of with, uh, just a side note, graffiti is going to be, um, on all of the big concrete ballworks. Uh, there are going to be huge amounts of, of, um, competitive tagging, it's going to go on there too. So you'll need probably more than, you'll probably need several security guards almost twenty-four hours a day. So I hope you will have the budgetary, um, plan in place so you can share it with us. And that would be, uh, something that you have already put money in to pay the, uh, planners. How about making sure that we as the taxpayers are not having the impact also? Thank you.
Laura, thank you very much for those comments because, uh, at this point in time, I'm not the budget chair. That's number one. Number two, this particular project has been in discussion for the board members and the new board members and the general public for over twenty years, from the conceptual plan twenty years ago to what it is today. The goal and objective of the bridge from what I've read and what you've read in the past too was the fact that it was just an access. If there's a natural disaster, it was just an access for pedestrian. Yes, it's pedestrians and bikeless, there's no automobile.
See, question above the fourth floor in Waikiki, that's the, that's the standard.
Okay, well, you see, the problem for me is that the Waikiki Neighborhood Board supports the.
That's a different.
I want, I want.
Okay.
Plan for us, will you have a plan for us, how much the money it's going to cost to do all of that security? The parking passes, everything that's going to be needed for securing that place that's going to be a pathway to crime on both sides of our residential neighborhoods, both sides of the canal, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Hello, body, this is Daisy.
Paul.
I have a question for, uh, council members say. Are you on the?
Wait, wait, one second, was that you, Wookiee?
Well, Wookiee, yeah.
Yeah, I, I had a, I had one question for.
We'll go with you first.
Say.
Okay.
Uh, just regarding, regarding the houselessness issue. Um, I'm wondering, when was the last time that you talked to a houseless person in, in deciding, you know, what policies to formulate for the city?
To be very honest, as I walk through Chinatown, I get to see them, but I don't talk to them. Is that a fair statement?
Sure, and I guess, I guess I would encourage you to, you know, take a moment and actually talk to some of the people who are living on the streets or who are living in the parks. Um, because I think the way I hear you talk about some of, um, some of the houseless people based on some, I think, harmful stereotypes and don't accurately reflect often the daily living situation of many uh, houseless people. And that leads to another question, which is for houseless people who live in your district, do you consider them your constituents?
Yes.
Okay, and so on that point, and I think we all need to do a better job of this. Um, you know, I, I, I spoke to five or six different people over the last week um, and heard about all the times that they're getting harassed by the police and thrown in jail. Um, you know, they go into cell block, HPD cell block overnight, they get brought to court and then they're released. Um, meanwhile, they lose all of the belongings that they've accumulated or saved or whatever it may be. And they have to start over from scratch. So any hope of saving enough money to, you know, put down first month rent and deposit and find housing is gone out the door because all of a sudden, they have to start all over from square one. And that is the story for many, many people. Now, I can't speak for everyone, of course, there are always going to be bad apples and, you know, um, people who make certain decisions. But, you know, I would love for you to come walk with me and, and, you know, Moiliili Neighborhood Park, uh, Old Stadium Park, we've talked about the Volodrome. Um, I mean, e- even outside of the district in Alamoana, um, we've talked to many, many houseless people who are, who have dozens, hundreds of criminal citations. Um, and, and the question is, does increasing criminal punishments do anything to solve the problem? You know, if, if houseless people have no place to go, you know, how many available vacancies are there on any given night? Fewer than twenty for two thousand four hundred unsheltered homeless people on the island of Oahu on any given night. That's, what's that percentage, less than one percent? So it's not, it's not their fault that, you know, we do not have an adequate supply of emergency shelters and/or affordable housing. And I think also that ties into the discussion about Kui Le Place where rather than focusing on middle, you know, even if it's called affordable, you know, we need to find housing that's affordable for, you know, fifty percent AMI or, or below because that is the only way that we're going to ever solve this problem. So I'll stop there, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Daisy, you know, from Councilmember's office. Um, I just wanna, wanna say that we're doing a walkabout on Makiki area.
Wait just a second.
Oh, sorry.
Just a second. Daisy, uh, you wanted to talk?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, council members say, are you a member of the Ompo? Are you a member of the Ompo Policy Board as one of the council members?
No, I'm not.
On the Ompo?
No, I was not.
Anyway, they are gonna hear or maybe have heard Resolution Amendment Number Fifteen. And in it, it has the Ala White Bridge funding. Also, there's gonna have electrical buses funding, but no hand event. And you know that there's over a hundred hand events that's not operable now and it's really bad for the community that really, really needs it. So, you know, we do have the, um, terrific people that are answering the call, the dispatch people, the drivers, but why are we having so many of the hand events not being able to use? You know, this is really a bad situation for your constituents and the whole island of Oahu. That needs to be really fixed. Unfortunately, everything is on the rail, which is not bad because people think rail is great. But don't forget, there are people that can't ride the rail because it's moving and it's bumpy. And people with wheelchair, how are they going to go on the elevator and smoothies, you know? So please take those.
Daisy, my one request to you, can you give me the, email me the number of the resolution that Ompo will be addressing? The representative from the city council would be the Chair of the Transportation Committee and the Vice Chair, which I'm not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now who was talking earlier? Did I cut off to talk to Daisy?
This is you now from Councilman Say's office. I was just saying that we're planning a walkabout with the Makiki Neighborhood Board and would be happy to, uh, plan one um, of points of interest for the Makali Moiliili Neighborhood Board as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, last questions for the councilmen. Going once? Going twice? Thank you for coming, Councilman.
Thank you very much, Paul.
Next, uh, we have Representative Andrew Garrett. Is he here?
I am here.
There you go. Hello there.
Thank, hi there, good evening, everyone. I hope everyone had a safe and happy Fourth a few nights ago. Just want to say congratulations to the new and returning members of the board, very much appreciate your public service. Um, just for the new members edification, uh, House District Twenty-two is primarily Manoa Valley as well as the Eastern Ridge of Townless, the Rontop Drive area. But the, um, district does come all the way down to South King Street, so that's the Makai Boundary. So essentially, everything Malka of that between the Hawaiian Humane Society and Makali. So that's the boundaries of House District Twenty-two. I know the bulk of, um, the Makali Moiliili Neighborhood Board jurisdiction falls under Representative Nishimoto, who is my adjoining neighbor to the south. So just wanted to let you folks know, that's where House District Twenty-two comes down to. Uh, just in the interest of time, I know you still have a presentation, um, under New Business, I'll keep this very short. Um, I did put in a link, uh, to my summer newsletter. So hopefully, uh, you guys have a chance to take a look at that. It does include some highlights of bills that were signed by the governor that I, uh, um, co-sponsored as well as a listing of, uh, CIP, um, that's Capital Improvement Projects, as well as grants and aid that we were able to secure for several nonprofits in our district, including Moiliili Community Center as well as the Hawaiian Humane Society that are within this neighborhood board's jurisdiction. Um, on the newsletter itself, you'll see a QR code which links to our community survey. Certainly encourage, uh, people in House District Twenty-two to, uh, fill that out so to help me get a sense of the, um, community sentiment, a lot of around, around a lot of the hot button issues facing the community. And the last thing just wanted to note is, uh, the, their, um, governor does have until July eleventh. I know Miss Ishii mentioned a couple of water-related bills. Um, at this point, it sounds like the Senate is pretty adamant that they are not going to come back into special session. But we'll have to wait another, uh, five days to see what the governor ultimately decides to veto. Um, so with that, I'll just stop there and see if there are any questions.
Any questions for Representative Andrew Garrett? Okay, thank you for coming.
Thank you, see you guys next month.
Okeydoke. Okay, next, Representative Scott Nishimoto. Scott?
Uh, aloha, Chair and Board, this is Taylor. I'm reaching out on behalf of Representative Scott Nishimoto. Uh, Representative, send his regards and, uh, we congratulate the new board members and the existing ones. Thank you for continuing to support the Makali Moiliili Neighborhood. Um, we don't have too many announcements, but we do have a Keiki to Kapuna Family Fun Day coming up at Old Stadium Park. It's gonna be on Saturday, July twenty-second from nine AM to noon and it's hosted by Blue Zones. Um, this is a really great community event. So, and it's a great way to be in the park, especially if you've ever felt, you know, maybe like worried about the homeless people there. It's, it's a really nice community and family-friendly event. Um, but I'm happy to take any questions back to my boss, thank you.
What day was that, um, Fun Day?
Um, it's gonna be on Saturday, July twenty-second, um, it's from nine AM to noon.
Alrighty.
We'll also be, uh, sharing it in our newsletter and I'm happy to, I'll drop the information to the chat.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have anything for Representative Nishimoto? Going once, twice, thank you for coming. Um, next one, Representative Adrian Chet Tan.
Uh, hi, um, everyone, thank you so much for having me. Um, for those that, um, I do represent in the district, you should have probably gotten a, uh, newsletter in the mail. Uh, keep in mind that this newsletter was printed before the list, um, in particular when it comes to line item budget vetoes um, that are out, so it might not represent the most accurate when it comes to our state budget. Um, but one announcement is that because the veto list is out, um, if you are following a bill and it is not on the veto list, it is most likely that it will become law either with or without a signature. Um, when it comes to our community and their concerns, uh, we are working with, um, Councilmember Say's office regarding a constituent's, um, complaint about trash under the bridge near the intersection of Laao Street and Kapilani, uh, Date, Date Street, sorry, not. And, um, I think that's all that I have to report right now. Oh, it is also hurricane season, I know a lot of you live in condos, just remember to keep, um, if there is a hurricane, please secure all the things under the. Thank you.
Alrighty, um, anybody else have anything for, uh, Representative Tan? No? Thank you for coming, Representative.
Thank you so much.
Next, Senator Carol Fukunaga. Going once.
Hi, my name is Claire on behalf of Senator Fukunaga. Um, I just wanted to apologize that she was feeling unwell for this evening, so I'm here on her behalf. Unfortunately, I don't have anything to report to you folks, but we will be submitting our written report, um, sometime next week. But I am here to take any questions to take back to her.
Anybody have any questions for the Senator? Going once? Twice, thank you for coming. Okay. Next, we have Sharon, uh, Senator Sharon Morawaki.
Aloha, Charles Izumoto, on behalf of Senator Morawaki, uh, apologize that she couldn't make it tonight. She actually has a foot injury and, um, been sort of limping around, but, uh, working hard, I assure you. Um, for, I just wanted to talk a little bit of our district because I know this is, um, a new, um, board. Um, old members obviously at the same time. Um, but our district, um, basically is westward of Willie Willie Street. And so we do have a portion of, um, um, Makali. So I, I posted our report in the chat. Um, there's a link to it and, um, there's some state news in there and we also have a community survey because we want to really hear from you guys and um, know what your concerns are and we actually do use that and Senator uses that every year to, um, formulate legislation and. to um formulate legislation and uh she really values your input. So if you could do us a favor and fill that out, that would be really great. And um, thanks, and I can take any concerns back to Senator. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for the Senator? Nobody? Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Okeydokey. Next.
Chair.
Yes.
That's London. Um, I'm not sure if he's here, but Senator, you skipped over Senator Ihara. Not sure if he's here or not.
Oh, I did. I did, sorry. Senator, um Les Ihara. Thank you for letting me know. I had a check mark over there. Send Ihara, is he here? Hopefully, that make a man.
Guess he's not here.
There you go. Okay, number nine, resident community comments. Um, it says brief mention of items or concerns or comments that are not on the agenda. Not quite sure what that means, so you might wanna help me out on this one.
That's just basically for the community to bring up things that's not an agenda item.
Okay, so I see anybody on the board have anything? Okay, Jack James, is that your name?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Chair. Thank you. And uh, I appreciate you giving me a minute to speak. Um, the name of my organization is Honolulu Seven Recall. We're dedicated to recalling the seven um council members who supported the recent pay raises. And our numbers are are growing daily. It's it's really quite an interesting movement. I've been here thirty-eight years on Oahu. I've never seen anything like this, but the reason I'm here this evening is just to let you know we're gonna be active in your neighborhood. Uh, we wanna be good neighbors. We'll be at every one of your board meetings in case you have questions of us. And Chair, I'll make sure you know how to get ahold of me in case something comes up and you need to reach out. It's just a courtesy on our part tonight to be here and um uh we want you to know that uh we are going to work diligently to recall, uh, but we'll also be good neighbors. Okay?
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? No. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next we have Approval of Minutes. Thursday, June first, regular meeting. Please submit. Um, we don't have to do anything there, yeah? Just skip to number. Okay. Where's that board guy?
What's up?
There you go. Okay, uh, we don't have uh approval of minutes, yeah?
Um, we do have quorum, I believe. Um, Louis showed up. So we can take that if you want to.
Sure, we um we just, we just ask uh everybody approve the meeting the minutes from the June meeting to that all.
Correct. If there's any um changes.
There hasn't been any changes, has there?
Not that I've received, but Thomas has been out.
Yeah. So we just go, anybody have any? Any comments or? Help me out with this one, cause I'm not sure how to proceed with this.
You can ask if there's any um changes or no objections and you can, if there's no changes or objections, then we can approve them.
Okay. Are there any objections? Can we break? We got a finger up there. Did you wanna say something? No, okay. Okay, so uh, anybody have anything they wanna add or disagree with? Otherwise, we're gonna take a vote approving the minutes from June first, two thousand twenty-three.
Uh, pardon me, might I say something?
Sure.
Hi, there we go. Uh, so I wasn't, I tried to raise my hand when there was time for public comments or anything that wasn't on the agenda. I can lower it now. Um, but my name is Peter Kula George. I'm a community organizer with the Honolulu Tenants Union, which uh you may have heard of in association with the Kapilani Village Tenant Association, um which is formed to try and uh, you know, amplify the voices of the residents being displaced by Kualae Place Development. Um, I am just here to like notify the neighborhood board that the tenants are creating a um like a letter, uh, like a coalition letter to show support for um their cause and to try and call out the displacement of low-income renters for the sake of building um housing for middle and upper income uh residents. Um, they're trying to show support because this development obviously is not only impacting them. It obviously has the prospects to uh impact the Moili neighborhood more broadly. And I think represents a general approach to quote-unquote housing affordability that will only continue to exacerbate the problems um that we identify right now with people having to move out of their neighborhoods off the island. Um, both in the working class and for native Hawaiians particularly. Um, so um, I wanted to give you all the offer to uh review that coalition letter to see if you wanted to sign on and support. Um, because I know that uh the board had or that the neighborhood organization has been critical of the Kualae Place Development in the past. If you wanna support the tenants who are currently there, trying to get um a better deal out of Kapilani or out of um the development group, um and to kind of amplify this uh situation more broadly because you know, if it's happening here, it can happen in lots of other places. Um, and just kind of challenge the status quo um on this front. So just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention and um if you're interested, I can have the letter sent to the neighborhood board when it's finalized.
All I can say is yes, we'll take the letter, but I think that uh we had uh Councilman Se on the on the hot seat there for a while. If I missed you, if I missed you, I'm sorry. I didn't, sure didn't see it. Um, but you can send us a letter, but I don't think we have much to stand on now. As he said, it's all been approved and I don't know, did you, sure, you send it to us and we'll, we'll try to see if our board members are in agreement. I mean, there's nothing else I can do.
Yep, that's, that's, that's all the tenants are looking for right now. Um, so for sure, I can send it over.
Thank you. Okeydokey. Now, where were we? Oh, so approval of the minutes for June meeting. Um, all those in favor? Say aye, isn't that right?
Correct.
Correct.
Aye.
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 Uh, very nice. We're, we're gonna have to go with a roll call, yeah?
I mean, if there's no checks, you cannot. You can um accept as is.
Okay, anybody have any objections to that being the official record for June? Okay, no, no objections. Thank you. Okay, next, new business. Here goes our presentation. Okay, High Ridge Costa Inform Partners regarding the Poor Ridge Affordable Housing at twenty-seven seventy-nine Wai'au Avenue. The presenter is Chris, and I believe that's him there. Hello, Chris. Chris, you're, you're mute right now. You have to get off mute. I don't know if you can hear me. We can't hear you. We still can't hear you. Go to the mute button. There's an hour to the right of it. Hit that, maybe that'll help. It'll give you some options. Still nothing.
Hi, sorry, I'm part of the um Pohora Ridge Presentation Team. We'll try to contact Chris and then get him on. Um, help him with little problems.
No problem. If I may, this is Mo Mohana, President, High Ridge Costa. Uh, Chris Duker is our partner. And until Chris gets his uh uh mic going, I will go ahead and uh get, get the presentation started for you with your permission. Is that okay?
Sure, fire away. You got five minutes to deal with this.
Okay, I will do my best here to uh let's see here, see to share. And share. Let me know when you can see my screen.
We got it.
Fantastic. Uh, thank you very much again. My name is Mo Mohana, High Ridge Costa. I have with me this evening our uh local development partner, Chris Duker, Form Partners, as well as our nonprofit partner, uh Scott Settle with the Affordable Housing Economic Development Foundation. Uh, tonight uh before you is a new community, rental community that we are planning to develop, which was planned to be a hundred percent affordable, uh and we will get into those details. We hope to present to you tonight our team, a little bit of our car company and our commitment to Hawaii, the project, and we'll talk a little bit about residents and the process uh moving forward. Um, brief history of High Ridge Costa. High Ridge Costa is an affordable housing developer with about twenty-nine years of experience. Uh, by next year, we'd have thirty under our belt. We have developed over three hundred and ten affordable housing communities throughout uh the nation. Uh, approximately thirty thousand units we basically develop uh to keep uh long-term. Um, our, our development partner, Form Partners, uh has also extensive development in various forms of multifamily housing. Uh, along with our uh nonprofit partner, uh Scott Settle with Affordable Housing Economic Development uh Foundation, whom we have partnered with on several communities here in Oahu, uh in the state of Hawaii. Our commitment to Hawaii, despite the fact that we're both national and local, uh is shown by this map. Uh, we currently have completed uh communities, both Affordable Housing Senior, Affordable Housing Family in Kaple. We have another other communities that are under construction in downtown Honolulu for uh seniors and family, and we have several under planning. We also have communities, uh a community in Ka'ako, Apo'ohkana Commons by Mother Waldron Park, which both serves both sixty percent area median income and lower, as well as the missing middle eighty to a hundred percent. And we have several communities uh in Maui as well as in the Big Island. So uh that's a little bit of background about us. Uh, just as a background, uh, this is a study by the University of Hawaii that was completed recently, showing that about fifty thousand new homes are needed by twenty twenty-five to, to serve Hawaii residents. Uh, eighty percent, uh, uh, actually, this one is a confusing statistic, so I should read it. Eighty percent of Oahu households earn less than what is necessary to afford a median-priced home. And half of the local households in Oahu can't afford a condominium. And it takes somebody making eighty percent of the area median income, about twenty-three and a half years, according to the study, to be able to get the payment. So that is putting significant pressure on rental housing in Oahu. So I will take a moment there and uh see if we got Chris Duker back online. Chris? Okay, so um we'll go ahead and talk about our project. So this is the location of our project, two seven seven nine Wai'au Avenue. It currently has a building with about six units and the rest of the site is vacant. And we intend to develop on this specific site and we'll go into circulation and uh uh traffic circulation, number of units, and so on and so forth. But this is the location here, uh currently adjacent to Highway One. Um.
Hey, Mo, can you hear me?
Yes, okay, perfect timing. You're on.
I'm sorry about that, everyone. Technical difficulties here. Um, aloha, Ka'ako. I'm Chris Duker with Form Partners. Uh, Mo, thank you for the introduction. Um, picking up where Mo was, so we're really excited about this opportunity. It's a great site, uh twenty-seven seventy-nine Wai'au Avenue. Uh, right, sort of at the back door to UH before you come down Wai'au and you can uh turn right and get on the freeway or come into UH or cross over on King Street. About twenty thousand feet, it's Zoned A two. There's currently six apartments on it. Uh, it's mostly land. And um, uh, thank you, Mo. And uh, our plan is to build affordable homes there. One of the great things about the site, it's centrally located. It's close to job centers, it's close to UH, it's close to Waikiki. It's very, very rare that um developments, we get this opportunity to put affordable housing in uh such a great location. Next slide, please, Mo. Uh, we put together a great team of local uh contractors, architects, people we've worked with over the years on many of our affordable projects. Everybody's super excited about delivering this level of affordability. Next slide. So what we've come up with is two hundred and eleven affordable homes. We've got ninety-eight one bedrooms, fifty-seven two bedrooms, fifty-six studios, about two hundred and eighty-one parking stalls. One of the key elements when we develop affordable housing, any housing, we wanna make sure that we have enough parking so that we're not uh, you know, invading the neighborhoods and have our people parking there. All of our two bedrooms have two stalls. And we kinda go above and beyond on that. Uh, amenities are really important. We think um one of the key elements of building a community is that we have rec areas, uh places where people can come and gather and get out of their homes and get together. Uh, we are twenty-eight stories, uh that's two hundred and fifty feet. Um, and the site is actually zoned for a hundred and fifty feet, so we are asking for additional height through the two oh one H process as part of building this kind of affordable housing. Next slide, please.
Okay, Chris, Chris, I hate to, to move in on you, but uh we have five minutes for those. And you guys are over that now, so wrap it up.
Yeah, you bet. Uh, next slide, Mo. Um, so you can just see it here, context how we're close to the freeway. Uh, keep going, Mo. Um, I'm just gonna go through really quick. Go, next slide. We get into the parking garage area that I talked about. If you go to the next one, Mo. Uh, this is again, community uh amenity areas that are important to us. We've got a deck, a pool, um, some of these great things. Keep going. Um, you can see a rooftop deck as well. Next slide, Mo. Uh, we do do lead uh sustainability uh elements within our, our projects. It's important for the environment and uh, you know, the people of Honolulu. Next slide. Uh, context, you just can see the building here and how it kinda fits into what's in the area. Uh, next slide, Mo. Oh, yep, there it is, kind of on here on the left, you can see it. Uh, again, another context. Next slide, Mo. Uh, here's another shot looking down Wai'au on the right and then obviously H one on the left. Uh, next slide.
Okay. Okay, you guys.
Right, all right, well, just, we'll, we'll wrap it up knowing that uh, you know, we had a town hall meeting um a couple, several weeks ago. Uh, invited all of the neighbors. We wanted to, you know, make sure we got the word out. Uh, we wanna bump beyond. Obviously, we're presenting to you. And uh, we're excited to do so. We have a website uh that you can look at, uh pahoraridge.com that has more information about the project. And uh, from a uh, but who will be living there, this is very important, fast food workers, you know, up to firefighters. I mean, really, the, the people of Honolulu that, you know, uh, take care of us, our first responders, uh, people that take care of us in the service industry. So everybody needs housing. That's why it's so important that we're developing this in the urban core. Next slide, Mo.
We're all with you.
Yeah, okay, um, this, this gives you the idea of what we're doing. We're, we're entitling this to do uh either the thirty to sixty percent AMI or the eighty to one hundred percent AMI. Um, we're doing it through the two oh one H process. Basically, we wanna build as much affordable housing as possible and we, we, we leave that ability to go either way so that we can go out and seek the financing that is available through the state programs and whichever one we get first.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Okay, sorry about that.
No, no worries. All right, our information we left with you. If anybody has questions or would like to talk um individually or offline, we're happy to do that. Uh, you can also, as I said, go to the website, get information on the project and email us as well, but um, anybody that wants to meet, we're happy to do it.
Thank you very much. Thanks for stopping by. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, the program uh information at homes. This project is a rental and lease project, correct? It, we're for purchasing as, as homeowners.
Yes, that's what I read, yeah.
Is that correct?
I think you should just go on their website. I think you should just go on their website, and you'll have all the information you need.
Thank you.
That's the best I can tell you.
How many stories high is it? I don't see that on the website.
We're 250 feet and we are.
Feet over. Okay, like I said, next, we got.
We have 29 stories.
We have designation. We have designation of board representatives. I think that what we need to do is, on our next meeting, figure out those ones, because we don't have any projects going on now. Yeah, is that all right with you?
I'm sorry, would you say that again?
No, I was nothing. I'm talking to our liaison.
That's all right if you postpone it, but there's a lot of hands up, I think, for the last presentation. I don't know if you wanted to address them or not.
Well, I think that we could stay here all night, talking to that. I was only given five minutes for that, so.
Okay, noted.
Chair, Chair, question of parliamentary procedure. This is Tom Heinrich.
Hello, Tom.
Chair, it is your prerogative as being president of the office to set the times. We have had discussions over the last couple of years about setting arbitrary time limits on the agenda. There have been other matters this evening that have taken an accord. It's an important amount of time. And this issue itself, to be limited to five minutes, is not fair.
Okay.
Please take a look at the other hands here, and as well, there are a number of questions that should be addressed. So I simply ask the board to entertain more time this evening, and if the presenters could also put their contact information in the chat, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Okay. So we'll take that under advisement and continue with the presentation that we're just listening to. So number of feet that the building was gonna go? 250 feet?
That is correct, yes. 29 stories.
Okay, and what is, what is the? What is the footage now? What are we gonna be over?
Well, the site is Zoned A2, which allows for 150 feet of buildable area, building.
So we're gonna go 100 feet over that?
Yeah, so we are seeking under the 201H process to go an additional 100 feet, which, you know, allows us to build much more affordable housing at this, at this site.
Okay, anybody, okay, as Tom said, anybody else have questions?
I do.
Can? Who's I do?
Laura.
I do as well.
Yes, I have a question. In plain speak, our Mo Eli Eli community makes between $30,000 and $60,000. That's an average amount they make in a year. How many of these units are you making that are truly within the affordable rental category for people that fall into the economic category I just described?
Well, it depends on which funding route we're able to secure through HHFDC through the state of Hawaii. Our intent is to build 30% to 60% AMI. The challenges with building at that level, though, is there's a finite amount of financing available. It's very, very competitive. There's about four projects for every one allocation. So what we are doing is, we are entitling this so that we can take advantage of one of two programs. One is that Lytec, which is 30% to 60% AMI. The other one is a missing middle program, an RHRF Tier 2, which allows rentals between 60% and 100% AMI. And those are people that, you know, are a lot of our working people in town that don't qualify for the very, very low end, but still can't afford market homes. So our intent, we're agnostic. We would much prefer to do the 30 to 60% AMI, but if we can't get the money, the funding, we would go the other route if we're able to get that one.
And these are rentals, am I correct?
Correct.
And, and have you used the model of the Marin Tower downtown as a way of handling the rentals? Lowest stories have lesser income, going up to probably a more middle, short of a middle income family.
No, well, actually, we don't do that. If, in either one of these scenarios, if we receive the funding to the 30 to 60%, you might have somebody at 30% on the top floor. It's, we're agnostic to it. We're just trying to provide housing for that income group.
If I may, we, if I may, we're not allowed under the low income housing tax credit program to just to differentiate the spec level or the location of any unit. It must be equally dispersed throughout the building. The low income housing tax credit program does not allow that kind of preference. And to your original question, 30% area median income to 60% area median income, that ranges from as low as $27,000 a year for a family of one, and up to 60% is at $78,000 a year for a family of four. So it is well within the target that you mentioned earlier.
Thank you.
Sure.
Chair elect to speak next.
Go ahead.
Aloha, thank you. Thank you, Chair. My name is Patty. I'm actually on the Manoa Neighborhood Board, Sub District 4, which we're dislocation borderline our district, and I actually live in this area, so I'll be impacted as well. I just have about three questions coming for you, Mo or Chris. First of all, I'm not sure. So are you saying that the zoning exemption has been granted, or are you seeking that the height deviation?
We are seeking through, through the entitlement process of the 201H, we are seeking to get a height variance. That process is, we're, we're going through HHFDC, which is the state agency, and then ultimately, we go before city council. This fall, we expect sometime, probably in October, that we would be before the city council.
Okay, do you have to do some kind of environmental study for this?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Are you required to do some kind of environmental study, traffic study for this project, for the height variance you're seeking?
We are, as part of the 201H process, you can either be exempted from an EA or an EIS if you're in the urban core, which this site is, and if it is zoned for residential, which this site is. So there's a process in doing that, and that, we are out for public comment on that now. And then in addition, we do, we do do studies. We've done all kinds of preliminary engineering reports in terms of water sewer availability of infrastructure, traffic studies, soil studies, environmental, geotechnical. We do very, very extensive study that's required as part of this 201H process.
Okay, great. Thanks for explaining that. So is there a public commentation area that public can participate in?
Yes, indeed. When we, we will be before HHFDC for a public hearing in most likely August or September, and then, and that gets posted. We'll put that on our website as well. There'll be one before we go to the city council. It gets council members say, highlighted earlier. Once they receive it, they have 45 days to respond, and there's two council meetings. There'll be one in front of Chair State's zoning committee, and then there'll be one before full council.
Okay, got it. Yes, so one of our concern is, as you know, the Wai'li Avenue, it is a one-way street. While I wrote, it takes you to the, the building is very close to the on-ramp to H1 westbound and also onto South King Street. I'm not sure, I guess I'd have to look at a little bit more where the entrance or exit will be for parking, because Kalili Row is right across from your location, and it's very difficult, as of it is, to even cross over to South King Street. And with having, I guess, protected, these 200 people living there with 200 something cars, it will be very difficult, it'll be very prone to traffic accidents, so I would like you folks to take that into account, or perhaps consider adding a traffic signal somewhere along the way so that people from that neighborhood or from the university exiting that area will be a lot easier. My last comment was, I know there was a town hall, and I was alerted by the neighborhood that there was a town hall meeting at the St. Louis Alumni Center a few weeks ago, but the neighbors around the area was very disappointed that nobody was invited. So I wanted to know if you could be kind enough to include everybody around there that will be impacted. So it was kind of found out by mistake. Everybody was very surprised. Nobody heard about it. So how do you explain that?
Yeah, I, I, I can't explain that, other than I can tell you what we did do. You know, we had sent out over, I think it was 800 mailers to all the neighboring businesses and residents in the area. We wanted to get the word out. We shared it with council members, say, the state legislators, because we wanted to have as many people there as possible. I'm sorry to hear that you didn't hear about it. And, you know, as I said earlier, I'm happy to meet with you or anyone else, Mo is as well, and kind of share the project in greater detail. But it's, I'm disappointed to hear that you didn't hear about it. We did, we did make a really big effort to make sure that we got the word out.
You missed the whole street on Kalili Row. How can, how could you do that? I mean, we're right there. There's no, no way you could have missed that.
If I may, there is a radius map that we do. Typically, it's 500 feet. We went beyond 500 feet. There isn't.
Which way do you go? 500 feet, you go backwards? Yeah, I mean, you can look at the radius, the circle. I'm pretty certain that Kalili Row and Kalili Row would be in your radius.
So we would be.
But anyway, that's all for which, so that's fine.
No, no, it's not.
Yes, I would be contacting both of you.
Yeah, it's actually not. Would be more than glad to meet with you and the neighborhood. Hold a meeting for them.
And I will hold you accountable for that. I would like to meet with you, share the neighbor's concern, because I've been receiving a lot of comments and questions, so, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Going once?
Paul, it's Wookiee here. We have a bunch of hands raised, just FYI, but.
I can't see it on my screen. Somebody.
Oh, okay, got it.
So I don't know. I just saw yours.
I guess this is more a comment, but, you know, I think, given, so it sounds like you are targeting the 30 to 60% AMI, but would consider up to 100% AMI. Is the project, is there any possibility that the project will serve above 100% AMI?
What we have is, we're entitling it and working it for three different scenarios, right? The rental at 30 to 60, sorry, 30 to 60% AMI. We are also entitling it where we can go up to 100% AMI as rentals. One of the things I'd mentioned earlier is, and we didn't have a chance to go through this, it's in our presentation, is you're entitling it. Right, because we are seeking these programs. There's 20 years when you're gonna submit for them.
They're echoing. Let's get others, others on mute, so it stops echoing. Okay, let's try it.
How about now? So there's two periods when you can submit. For the missing middle, it's in the fall, which is that 80 to 100%. For the Lytec, which is the 30 to 60%, that's, we submit for that in February, and you don't hear for about six months. So what we've committed to do is, we are going to submit two times for each one, seeking that financing. To the extent we're not able to get that financing after two times submitting with each one, we've asked for the ability that we can pivot and do a for sale project. So in that regard, half of the units would be affordable, plus one unit, and then the remaining units would be at missing middle, which is kind of the entry level of the market. That is only as a relief valve in case we are unable to get the financing through those two programs. What we do is, we build rentals. That's what we want to build. That's, all of our current projects are that way now. The only reason we do that is, it's an escape valve so that we can move forward, get our entitlements, work to get the plans in place, and then as soon as we get the financing, we can launch. If we're unable to get the financing, the only way to build the project is to do it then as a for sale, affordable, and workforce housing project.
Thank you for that explanation, and it's really, I mean, I really applaud you for, you know, essentially attempting to service, right? All of your units under, at or under median income. And, you know, by contrast, the other project that we've been talking about today, Kuile Place, had 4% of the units at or under the median, and so, but that, you know, yet that project is being framed as an affordable housing project. So I'm very, very pleased to hear your different scenarios and, you know, commend you. Of course, I haven't looked at the rest of the specs, but just, just based on that alone, I am very supportive of your effort.
Yeah, I appreciate, we, we very much appreciate that. I would say, you know, this isn't, it's very, very complex, the different programs that are available to get your financing. And I know this probably seems like, why is there so many different ways they're entitling it? We are on a mission. We're trying to build more affordable housing. And whether that's the 30 to 60, which we want to do more than anything, but it's very, very hard to get that financing right now, very competitive. So we're looking at what are alternatives that we can do to just keep filling the continuum of housing that we need here in Honolulu. We need it at all levels, and we all recognize we really need it at the 30 to 60, and then we need it again at the 80 to 100. But any kind of housing that we can build, the better, but our focus is on that rental, and it's on the lower income AMI levels.
Chair, this is Daisy. I have a question. Since this is such a, the timeline is really speeding ahead for like October approval by the council members, and we're just hearing it now. Is it possible to also let the other surrounding neighborhood boards know of this plan? Because it's gonna affect Manoa, which is number four, and the surrounding area of Kapohulu, Kamiki, et cetera, which is number five. Number five will be meeting next week, Thursday. And you can get in contact with Dylan Woodso. I assume he's gonna be the chair again in Manoa, because this is important, right, at the freeway, and make sure that UH is also involved in it, because affects traffic coming in and out of the UH parking lot. So this is a good project, but it needs to make sure that all the surrounding areas also know about it. Appreciate it. Thank you.
So if I may, very quickly, I am reading the comments on the side, and I think the lack of our ability to walk through the plans in detail, explain the circulation, the one-way circulation, the fact there is no 140% on the rental, and it's, it's limited. So we would like the opportunity with the board members that have put the comments to please reach out. I did put my email address here. We would be more than glad to walk through the entire deck, answer every question that you have, and address it to the best of our ability. Our objective is absolute and full transparency of the entire slide deck before you. This is not going to be approved by council in October. It goes to the HHFDC board, that then refers it to the zoning committee, that then refers to city council. So there's at a minimum two more public hearings in addition to the one at the HHFDC board. We are in the very beginning of our process. This is not being rushed. We are at our first board meeting. We went to the neighborhood meeting, but please allow us the time to go through the slide deck. This is a large project. You are correct. And it cannot be done within the five minutes. We are, we agree with you on that. Reach out. We will go through it and give you as much time as you need and answer all the questions to the best of our ability, and provide you copies of the presentation so that it's transparent. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm talking more about community members that live in the area, work in the area. That also needs to be, because I'm sure these surrounding areas, this is the first time they've hear of this. So it would be very helpful, because a lot of people can get stuck in traffic, and you try to get onto the freeway from the UH. Kind of is very impossible. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, Chair. This is Seth. I have a question.
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Chair. So for the 201H process, are you guys going through the city or through the state?
We're going through the state.
Yes, there's a state planning department, to be very clear. However, it still goes to city council. So it's just.
No, 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 sorry. I meant like, I know DPP can handle some 201H, like city projects.
Correct. This one is 201H application. In this case, is being handled by HHFDC. This, this one is a two oh one H application and this case is being handled by HHFDC instead of DPP. But either way, it must end at city council public hearing regardless.
Was there a reason that you chose the state route and not the city DPP route?
Just, just current backlog and the fact that HHFDC is now accepting applications. So it's just a matter of uh, who has time to process, so we elected that one. But again, regardless who processed it, DPP does review it, does have the opportunity to provide comments to council when council he hears it. And then uh, it is then decided by council regardless which department processes it.
Yeah, the other element I would add to is HHFDC is who we submit for financing. So it is, it is advantageous when they know the project and understand it from processing it through when we go in and seek financing.
Okay, and um, I guess the next question, I'm sorry you guys didn't go through the slide deck, but um, the exemptions, I mean, I know we talk about height, it's easy to see hundreds foot over. Um, I mean, what are the other list of exemptions that's, that is going to be on that two oh one H uh, application to the city council?
Uh, primarily the heights uh, and FAR, the floor area ratio, you know, how much you're allowed to build.
Yeah, what is the FAR of this project? Sorry.
Pardon?
What, what is the FAR of this proposal?
FAR on this project is um, uh, bear with me here. We're at uh, sorry, it's in our deck here and that's why I'm looking for it. Um, it's uh, um, nine point three.
Nine point three. And just for everyone's uh, edification, A two as currently uh, zoned, what would be the FAR for this size lot?
Uh, one point five.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, I guess there are no more hands up. So thank you for coming. And uh, we'll go from there.
Yeah, thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Okey dokey. Members report attendance, public meeting, no, that's right. Uh, housekeeping and announcements. Um, Oledo Broadcast McCully, really neighborhood board meetings are on channel forty-nine. The following schedule, third Friday of the month and nine PM. And the second and fourth Saturday, three PM. Uh, bulky item pickup, uh, you gotta call the numbers seven, six, eight, thirty-two hundred. Reporting neighborhood issues. There's the, the website. Next regular meeting, August the third. Um, location to be determined. And that'll wrap it up for the evening. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to, to do that.
Hello, Paul.
Yes, sir.
Oh, this is Lassihara. I uh, don't have video, I just got on, sorry. Uh, if there's any questions uh, now or late, or next meeting, uh, I can take any.
Um, I, I.
Sorry, I, I'm, I know you're ended, so I'll just, just note that I, I signed on late.
Oh, we sure will.
I'll just, well, have a nice night.
Okay, but thanks for stopping by.
Okay, thank you, bye.
Okay.
Guys, have a good evening.
Okay, thank you all again. Wookiee, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Hi, everyone, everyone.